Okay, everyone, if you could find your seat, we're about to get started. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, if we could settle down, we're gonna get started. Having a little fun. I just came back from vacation, please excuse me. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you do the roll call?
Present.
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 Present, and we do have some appointments by the look of this full room. Next week, we'll be back to five people, but today, we're gonna take it, we'll enjoy it. So can I ask Jalen LaBoy and his mom, Chenessa LaBoy, to come forward? Right hand and repeat after me. I, Jalen LaBoy, do solemnly swear,
To solemnly swear.
To uphold, defend, and support the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold, defend, and support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws of the Village of Tocco.
And the laws of the Village of Tocco.
I also promise to discharge the duties of police officer in the Village of Tocco.
I also promise to discharge the duties of...
I also promise to discharge the duties of police officer.
I also charge... To discharge the duties of the police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer LaBoy. Congratulations, Mom. May I have Robert... Oh! Jalen, we need you to just come up and sign. You're gonna sign your life away right here. And may I just have Robert Lally and his uncle Paul Puccini get ready to come forward? Jalen, you can go ahead, if he wants, yeah, it's okay. It's a once-in-a-lifetime picture, right? He just wants to... Yeah. Okay, Robert. You have it easy because you get to do it the second time, so you heard it the first time. And his uncle Paul. So I, Robert Lally,
I, Robert Lally,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold, defend, and support the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold, defend, and support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will discharge my duties as police officer to the best of my ability.
Will discharge my duties as a police officer to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Robert. So first and foremost... First and foremost, if Jalen and Robert would like to say anything, you may do so now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would just like to thank the Village Board, Chief Costanzo, for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank my family for coming out and supporting me throughout this whole journey. And I'm happy to start my career here as a Tocco Police Department. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I first wanted to thank Chief Costanzo and the Village Board for this incredible opportunity. I am so grateful that I've been selected for a position that I've been striving for since I was a little kid. I have always idolized all first responders for their selfless dedication to their communities and their sense of pride that comes along with it. I could not have asked for a better department to join, and I look forward to becoming a part of such a close-knit unit. I can't wait to serve the wonderful Village of Tocco and protect all the amazing people that live in my hometown. Thank you again.
Chief Costanzo? See that, chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board.
Good evening.
Congratulations to the Lally family and the LaBoy family, it's a proud moment for all of them. And of course, the Robert and Jalen as well. So Mayor, if you wanna get a better attendance, we could keep just appointing police officers.
We could, or we could serve beer, one or the other.
You know, the Village Board participated in the selection process, and you saw these two fine gentlemen, what they brought to the table. And when we spoke after both of these individuals interviewed, we talked about chemistry in the Police Department and what it means for police officers to understand community policing, to get involved, to participate in our outreach programs. And we know that these two fine gentlemen are going to be perfect fits for the Tocco Police Department. We know this because we made them come to cops, come with a cop when they weren't even appointed yet and didn't even, the paperwork wasn't even approved, but they came, they participated, they joined in with the young people that attended that event, and we knew that we made the right choice. They are embarking on the next six months of a very grueling academy that's going to be physically and mentally demanding. So we know that they're going to do fine during that process, and then join us sometime in mid-December for their field training. And then finally, for the Tocco Police Department, we will be up to full staff at that time. We lost four people in the last 12 months to retirements and resignations, and it's been a difficult journey getting through these 12 months. And knowing that this Village Board was quick to make the appointments and fill the vacancies as quickly as possible, as quickly as the bureaucracy of, you know, civil service allows, means a lot, and means a lot to the members of the department as well as to the public. So I thank this Board for that spirit of cooperation and for your support. And I wish both Jalen and Robert the very best. Safe, long, fulfilling careers, and congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. If any of the family members would like to come forward and say anything, you may do so now. Come on, John Smith. And crying is allowed, just saying.
This is one time I don't really have much to say.
Wow.
I'm gonna keep this short. To be a part of Tocco. I've been here 70 years. Went to kindergarten in this building. I watched 15 different mayors come and go. And wasn't a great kid, but I knew when to stop. And I love this town, and thank you.
I just want to say to Jalen, congratulations, wonderful opportunity, and you've earned it, that's why you're here. To my son, Robert, my one and only, I am so proud of you. You are an amazing young man. Your father is looking down on you, and he loves you, and everybody here loves you. And everybody is so proud. You are a wonderful man, and you will have a wonderful journey here. And thank you all for giving him this opportunity to show you what a great guy he is. I love you, congratulations.
Okay, I said crying was allowed, I didn't mean for me, I meant for you guys. Would the Board like to say anything, anyone on the Board? You're welcome to.
You know, we talk about community policing being the backbone of this Police Department, and you all, you both brought the entire Village of Tocco here with you tonight, which speaks loudly about who you are and what you will contribute to this Police Department. And so I want to thank your families for being supportive and for being here, and for the whole community for showing up for these two young men, and for this village, thank you.
Congratulations to the LaBoy Smith family and the Lally family. I'll start with Robert first. I had the pleasure of coaching Robert in youth tackle Potwana football. And he was an excellent young man, very tough, but he was well behaved. And I do miss his dad, Terry, he was also a fine gentleman. You guys did an excellent job with him, and he's gonna make this village proud. He's gonna make it proud. Congratulations to the Lally family. To Jalen and Chenessa and Phil and the entire family, this is a proud moment for all of y'all, but also for me. Jalen has been nothing but an awesome young man for as long as I've known him. You guys did an excellent job raising him. He prepared for this job, he worked hard, he got himself in shape, just like I'm sure Robert did. And he's also gonna make everybody proud here, and he's gonna be an awesome police officer for the Village of Tocco. You guys should be really, really proud, both families, of what you have accomplished with these two young men. Thank you.
So congratulations to these two fine young men. As the chief said, you know, we've had a lot of appointments to make, and after sitting on the Board for three and a half years, I've seen, you know, this amazing group of candidates that come in as first officers here in this village. They're almost all from Tocco. They have this amazing ability to carry themselves with a maturity beyond their age. They have incredible emotional intelligence. They understand, you know, what it means to be a police officer. And I've just been so impressed with the quality of the candidates, you know, and I think there's definitely two things that contribute to that. There is, of course, our awesome Police Department, and, you know, I think kids growing up here see them, and they want to join that. And then, of course, that has to work in conjunction with the families in the communities, so moms and dads, uncles, aunts, cousins, all of you have done just an amazing job here. So I want to thank you, I'm proud of all of you.
I remember meeting both of you during the interview process, and I have the same smile and kind of joy in my heart right now, seeing you now, kind of sworn in as I did when I met both of you. You're fine examples of the best, the very best that Tocco has to offer. You should be quite proud of all that you've accomplished, as well as your families, and feel very excited about the very bright futures we all expect that you will accomplish in the coming years. So congratulations, thank you for choosing Tocco to serve, and we expect great and wonderful things from both of you, thank you.
So congratulations, gentlemen. I will echo everything that everyone here has said, and also want to remind you of the discussion that we had in our office when we talked about what community policing looks like. And you both embodied just what that means. And so I look forward to, as, for the years that I'm here and everyone else on this Board, and for many years to come, you're going to impact the Police Department in a positive way. And so that really makes me excited, you know, about the fact that we have appointed you here today. Before you leave, though, we do need to actually vote on this appointment, which I probably should have done first, right? Okay, I just came back from vacation, give me a break. So may I have a motion to authorize the appointment of Robert J. Lally and Jalen LaBoy to the position of police officer effective July 18th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, gentlemen. And so this is your opportunity to escape the rest of the meeting, if you'd like, and go have that beer and dinner. And Jalen said wherever the family surprises him to go, he'll go. But I think he wants it to be a very expensive restaurant, Mom and Dad, just want you to know, just saying. Okay, so we do have some more appointments to go through. May I have a motion authorizing the appointment of Chris Mahoney as a sanitation laborer effective Monday, July 11th?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the next four appointments are for our volunteer boards, so I want to thank the volunteers in advance for coming forward. Sometimes it's hard to find people who are willing to give of their time and their talent, so we appreciate it when people do. So I may have a motion authorizing the appointment of Michelle Liscio as Assessor to fill the unexpired term of office to April 1st, 2023?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May I have a motion authorizing the appointment of Lauren Peretta to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill an unexpired term of office expiring April 1st, 2027?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May I have a motion authorizing the appointment of Henry Suarez as an ad hoc member of the Zoning Board for a term to expire April 1st, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And last but not least, may I have a motion authorizing the appointment of Laura Garashow to the Sign and Honing Board for a term expiring April 1st, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And if we have any of these volunteers here today, either on Zoom or in person, oh, Laura, if you would like to come forward so that people know who you are, you can, and, or if you want to stand up. Thank you, Laura, for your service, thank you very much. Yeah, we go through a lot of work to find people, the right fits for these Boards, and so we do appreciate your volunteering. We still have our public hearing to consider the proposed local law regarding affordable housing. But before we continue with the Village's input, the Village Attorney will present PowerPoint to the residents to answer questions that have been brought forth, or questions that you might be thinking about. So why don't we do that now, Gary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is the Affordable Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Law, and I would like to thank
It's a tongue twister.
Mr. Burke for naming the law.
So we are going to put the slideshow up so that everyone can see and follow along on Zoom, I hope.
And I know there's been a lot of, you know, misconception about the law out there, so
Right.
Hopefully this will clear some things.
I don't know if your mic is on, Gary, or if you're close enough to it.
Probably not close enough, does that help?
Yeah. And can everyone on Zoom hear, David? Are we getting any messages that people can't hear us? Okay. And so let's wait until we can get it up on the screen. Almost there, Wade, not quite.
You want to take a look, David? Want to go take a look?
Sorry about that, I would like to make sure that we are able to put it up on the screen so that everyone can see it. So if you just give us a few minutes, there we go. Good help is hard to find around here.
So the objective of the PowerPoint is hopefully to clear up some misconceptions and walk the village through what the law is intending to do. First, we'll go to, who will the law impact? So what happens is, nothing that's built right now, this law does not affect anything. If you're building a single-family house, does not affect it. This law will impact a developer coming in and building 10 or more units, housing units. That's, and that's from this point, if the Board approves this law, going forward. So if they build 10 to 14 units, they'll have to designate one of those units as an affordable housing unit. If they do 15 to 24, then it would be two, and then 25 through 34 would be three, and then so on. So increments of 10. So as I said, this law, the next one is, who will this law not impact? So existing homeowners, anything that's built right now, this law will have no impact whatsoever. It will not have impact for a developer coming in and building nine units or less. Will not impact the Tocco Housing Authority, homeowners seeking approval for renovations, it will not impact those people at all. So what is the law again? The law is to make a developer, if I'm a developer coming in, I'm gonna build 10 or more units. I need to at least do approximately 10% of, it's a carve-out where I would have to put one unit aside for the affordable housing. And again, this does not affect anyway what's built out there or anything that's been approved thus far. This is really just going forward for projects for 10 or over units. So the initiative, what does this law not do? An initiative to promote development or increase the total number of residential units or other modifications to the Village zoning code. So there's no addition allowable units, stories, floors, or FAR. So what happens is, I know Lou Campania came in and asked a question last time. Well, okay, so now a developer comes in, today, the developer can build 10 units with no, without having to put aside any affordable housing units. But if this law is passed tomorrow, again, he would have to put at least 10% of the units as affordable housing. What does the developer get? I think that was Mr. Campania's question. And with this law, the developer does not really get anything on the building side. So he can't build higher, can't build bigger. So there's no incentives for the developer, other than to do business here and build these projects. At least, they're gonna have to help out with the affordable housing component. There is, there is one thing that the developer would see the benefit of, is that's a little bit of a streamlined process through the Planning and Zoning Board. So if they're before Planning and Zoning Board, they would get bumped up to the front of the agenda. We can't, we wouldn't be able to bump that application to next meeting, which we would never do anyway to any applicant here. But it's a little bit of an expedited review process. They would still have to go through the same process, same Planning Board, zoning, if they need variances, through that same process. So what would the law impact? It's Village of Tocco only, this does not impact anything outside of our borders. Again, new residential construction with 10 or more units in the Village of Tocco, and then area zone for multi-unit residential construction. So somebody can't come in in a single-family district and build a 10, you know, 10-unit building here. What would the law not impact? It does not impact, it has nothing to do with commercial activity. So the Marbledale Road car corridor would not impact. It would not impact, again, new construction of single-family homes. And there's no limitation on current residential sales on whom you sell to. So again, nothing existing, this does not impact anything existing. It only impacts projects where a developer comes in and is looking to build 10 or more units. And when would the law go into effect? If the Board passes this law, it would go into effect when it gets filed with the state. Probably about two weeks from now. So the law would go into effect, but it would not be implemented really until somebody comes in with an application to say, "I want to build this development, there's gonna be 10 or more units," and then the law would take over from that point. We know of no development on the horizon. Again, this is, it would be a very large project for somebody coming in, building 10 or more units. We have not heard anything. So it could be a while before this law is actually used. So why is the law being proposed? Clearly, there is critical shortage of affordable housing in the area, and that's why we're proposing it, to help people with being able to afford staying here in the village. And it's obviously extremely important. How will the law be rolled out? Again, when a developer comes in, if this law is passed and he makes an application for residential units with 10 or more units, then he would still need to go, then he would start the process, the planning and zoning. If there's any variances needed, he'd need to go to zoning. He would obviously definitely need to go to planning for site plan approval. But nothing changes. So today, if a developer comes in and says, "I want to build 10 units," he would have to go through that same process. And if, once this law passes, he would have to go through the same exact process. But in the future case, he would need to put aside at least 10% of the units as affordable housing. How will this law impact the Village of Tocco? Like I said, there's, right now, there's no projects that we see on the horizon. So there would be very little impact right now, but if something does come up where it's gonna be 10 or more units, obviously, then there will be a little bit of an impact there. So frequently asked questions. Will the village lose autonomy over zoning regulations if this law were to be enacted? The answer is no. The Village zoning code and approval process will still dictate all the development within the village. Will developers be provided incentives or be allowed to usurp current zoning provisions? And again, the answer is no to that. There are no current incentives, current built into the law, and all current zoning provisions must be adhered to. No extra stories, no increased FAR, which is the size of the building. I know there was a question here last time, a gentleman said, "Well, why don't you make it 20% or 30," you know? And what happens at that point, then, if you're telling a developer who's gonna build 10 units to make 20% of the units affordable housing, where there's restrictions on what he can do with that, then on what he can do with that, then, at that point, you may have to offer incentives. Hey, you can build taller, or build bigger. But that's not the case with this law, we're saying 10%, but you're following our zoning and planning laws as it stands right now. Is this a mandate from the federal, state, or county government? The answer to that is no, there is no mandate from any level of government. Is the village planning to build any affordable housing? No, this village does not build affordable housing, this provision would not, would apply only to private development. And then, so what happens is, if, with affordable housing, there is restrictions on who you can sell or rent to, and that's based on the area median income. So right now, for a family of four in Westchester, the area median income, it's 80%, is what we would have to calculate by, would be 110,900, so it's, it's fairly high. Westchester's obviously an extremely expensive place to live. So, I know questions were, I know questions were thrown out to the board saying, "Well, how's this going to impact the schools?" And again, it would have no impact on the schools. Today, right now, if a developer comes in and wants to build 10 homes, he would have to go through the planning and zoning. Tomorrow, same developer wants to build the 10 homes, all, all this is requiring that developer to do is put aside at least 10% of those units as affordable housing. So, that's in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Anyone on the board have questions? Okay. So if anyone in the public would like to come forward now, you may do so to continue to weigh into this public hearing.
Hello everyone, Jeff Sokerman, I live on 24 Brock Street. Nice to see all of you tonight. I just want to say this, yesterday in the Journal News, they had a big article on all the affordable housing in Westchester, and with all the restrictions that Gary just went over, I want to tell you that it has barely moved the needle like this much. If you read the article, they went through town and village after town, village, city, that have instituted this, have adopted this, it's been almost nothing. So, it's noble of you, I think it's wonderful, thank you for doing it, and unfortunately, people that need housing need a whole lot more, but thank you for doing this, I appreciate it.
Good evening, John Debatto, 19 Stebbins Avenue, Eastchester, President Bronx Manor Association. Thank you mayor and board trustees for listening. I appreciate all the hard work you're doing with that, and I keep coming up again, I don't want to be a bother, but I just wanted to get through it first, be devil's advocate, because once you do something, it affects 50, 100 years. So, I had just some questions from, this is, so this is the same one that was from the website, the, with the FFH, with the A, B, C, and all the letters. On, let's see, section D, so time period affordability, units designated as AFFH must remain minimum 50 years. So that, this is just a draft, or that's, you, would you amend this?
If we pass it, that's, that's what it would be, yes.
And that's pretty much like the standard? You said this was the Westchester model?
Yeah, this is the model, the Westchester model ordinance.
And then, section F1, well, within single-family developments, AFF units may be single-family homes, or if plan were so elect, so that's if they build like a cluster of single-family, they have to make one? I was confused on that.
That's correct, so if, if there's a development that's going to have 10 or more single-family homes, then one of those homes would have to be affordable housing.
Like Apple, like an apple court in Eastchester.
Exactly, yes.
When they make a cul-de-sac.
Exactly.
So, you know, you gotta, you gotta read it, I didn't see that on that. All right, um, okay. And there was one other thing, let me get my notes. And this, so if you vote tonight, this goes in, would, are you guys considering altering this at all, or is, like just from feedback, or are you, you know, ready to close this session?
Well, we'll take in your, anyone's feedback today, and...
I just, I just want to say, not to rush into things, because like I said, once you do this, and this is, this is, you know, it's not a bad law, it's not like, you know, trying to scare people, but if planning and zoning changes something down the road, does it open the village up to developers coming in to try to, I know you said there's no incentives, but you streamline the process, so it kind of is an incentive, I know there's not a FAR, a bigger height. I'm just wanting, you know, know all the, you know, the details before, we don't want to go down a road where everything gets overbuilt and then traffic, strain on services, stormwater, police, fire. I've been here almost as long as Smitty, I'm here 40 years.
So as...
Not there yet, but, you know, we had the Big Mac, McMansion craze the end of the 90s and early 2000s here, we were on the news, you guys weren't all here except for Darrell, I think, so.
So, you know, so if we were to go back, take away this law, if somebody wants to come in and build, they can do that today.
Yes.
This law, all that it does, it says you have to set aside 10%. So really, nothing is changing, the process is not changing, then they have to go through zoning and planning, none of that, none of that is changing. The only thing that this board is trying to do, and, and to be honest, this is a very weak way of doing it, is trying to afford people some respite.
It's expensive to live.
Which, right.
You work like three jobs.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you understand that, so I don't know that, right, so I don't know that this law is really going to have any kind of significant impact.
I'm just looking down the road.
Right.
In case planning and zoning changes, changes, you know, stuff, listen, Marbledale, Columbus, they're knocking things down, eventually stuff, you want to build sensible, you want to go into the next century, you know?
So when a change is made to the law of planning or zoning, is that not approved by the board?
Yes.
Yeah, so you, it would be a public hearing.
A public hearing would have to happen again.
All of that would have to happen.
Yeah.
I just, like I said, it's...
Yeah, so is there anything that you'd like...
I'm not locked into anything where, you know, I see 50 years, you know, just going through it.
Right, so let me just, so let me just ask a question then, is there something that you would like to contribute to the conversation that might change something in this law, that you want the board to?
Not this, maybe the 50 years with the law, just, I don't like, I don't like long leases.
Can I say something about the 50 years?
Otherwise, the law is not bad, I'm just saying, down the road, just didn't want the village getting...
So what would you recommend? If you were to make a recommendation?
Nothing with this law, no, I've just got questions to understand it.
Right.
And I didn't understand when I read through it on the single-family houses, so...
It's any rentals, any...
That's weird, usually a building, you get, you know, some, you know, different, you don't, you don't see it in housing developments, I don't know if they can make enough money on that, that's very slim when they do like, single families.
Yeah, it would be tough for Tocco, there's not really...
There's not a big amount of property, like it's not like, yeah, an empty thing, to, to fit that.
The likelihood of it happening with that kind of speed challenge.
To see it just, in case you guys didn't, you know, do something, and then it packs another generation.
Hopefully this will impact another generation in a positive way, hopefully.
Absolutely, you want to build, you know, build smarter. Listen, I would love to volunteer for planning or zoning, but again, like I always keep saying, not allowed to vote here, we're, right now, I could, I could look at Tocco across the street.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know...
Sorry.
In the future, could you maybe think about doing something like Harrison, where you have a mixed use, where, you know, their taxes are a little easier because they have like, light commercial, but not like a commercial like Marbledale Road was, but maybe something like tech, or something like that, where, because all we do here is, we build stuff, and then we put more kids and more stuff, and then we have to bond, and we go in a circle. We build, and then we chase our tail to try to say, "Oh, we need more money because we have all this stuff." We need like, low-impact, you know, revenue generating things for, for the village.
So were you going to say something, or Kara?
Yeah.
Actually, thank you for hearing.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to speak to your, the concern about the 50 years, so I'm not sure if, I just want to clarify what that means. So actually presently, we have homes that were deemed as affordable in the village, and for a certain amount of time, they must remain affordable, meaning that there's a control about who can either rent them if they're rentals, or purchase them if you purchase them, but then after that term expires, then they become market rate, that's just what that 50-year means. So I, I don't know that that would have the impact that you think it might have, it means that eventually, those, those units could actually become market rate, is that correct?
That's correct. And I, and I think, I mean, my, I can say my personal thought on that is that it should be, we should, you know, make it 50 years or more, because then, what's the point of having the affordable housing law if we're going to say, "Okay, in five years, you can make it market rate," right? What's the point then?
Nothing.
Yeah, we were trying to help people be able to live here and stay here, and, or go away to school and come back here, you know, it's, Westchester's not easy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes? Okay, Chris, she beat you to it. Good evening.
This is a history lesson here, my name is Lovely Phillips, South High Street, forever. I am, I, I just want to turn the pages of his, go back a little bit, to talk about, as everyone knows, I'm a great believer that there is strength in diversity. And having been here for so many years, my family bought the house I'm in in 1936. When I was married and had my children, the minority population in Tocco was 20%. And it is now down at 7.5%. And the reason primarily for that drop is in affordable housing. Many of the minority families have raised their children who did well, who became accomplished, and were, and could not find a place to live in this beautiful little village called Tocco. We've got to confront that, and I, I get nervous when I hear people saying things like, "Well, if you have," it was, someone alluded to last time, affordable housing would bring in children, which would be a burden on the schools, something to that effect. Absolutely intolerable for anyone to even think at that level. I am appealing to the voices in this beautiful village to understand that there is strength in diversity. We can, and some of us are getting together to give you a page-by-page record of what happened to our children who achieved and could not find a place to live in Tocco, because they were outpriced. You just get out of college, you don't have the kind of money that people made who worked in the quarry and had money forever, and we did not. I, I am really very serious about this, I will not stop talking about it, it is a soul issue in a lot of ways. The beauty in the town of Eastchester, Tocco is still to a lot, the diversity jewel, and I'm glad you're doing something. It is amazing to me that we have had to use the Bronxville model. Bronxville, who had a reputation that was outrageous, and now they are the model that we have to look at, and I'm telling you one thing, if you go down Pondfield Avenue in Bronxville, it looks a lot, lot more like the UN than up on Mill Road. So I'm telling you, we need to come together, stay together, stop the wild and unpatriotic, un-American, inhuman kinds of things that we say and think and unfortunately operate and do. I beg you, I love Tocco, I love the fact, I love the fact that I live north of the Mason Dixon line, and I don't want to live in any place that looks like they think we're on the other side of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board?
Christie Giorgio, 50, Columbus. First, I want to say I support this law, I, I hope it passes. I just want to ask, because I think a lot of the development that has been done in Tocco over the years is over. I, maybe I'm pie in the sky, the only place I could think of, and maybe there's others. First off, for those who think we're going to build housing on Marbledale Road, that's never going to happen, okay, because it was a landfill, and frankly, it's not safe. I, I, I will be standing and screaming if any housing goes on Marbledale Road, frankly. So that starts number one. Number two, the, the only place I think there can be a potential for development is behind my building on Circuit, I think it's Wallace and Limekill. They knocked down an old apartment building there, and it's a vacant lot right now. I don't know if there's been any planning or zoning for that, and, and has that, would they be able to, would that new law affect them, or no?
No, because that's already been decided, and the building's design has been approved. You know, I don't know Gary if you want to talk about what's been holding that up, but that's all been decided, it's been presented at, you know, numerous planning and zoning board meetings.
That's...
That's correct, yeah, this was approved a while ago, a little over a year ago, and it was, I know there's supply issues and stuff like that with, with the builder, trying...
Do they have any time limit on their development, or this goes on for an infinite item? Do you know what...
It's a good question, it's, it's up to the building department, but I'll leave it in their hands.
Because, yeah, so, I mean...
They have to keep moving.
All I'm saying is, this is a law that can impact future development, but I don't, I don't know if it's going to be impacting future development even for the first 10 years, frankly. So unless another old building gets knocked down, which there are a few that might get knocked down, but other than that, I, I just don't see really a lot of development, maybe on Columbus Avenue, but I just don't think this law is going to be as impactful as some of the critics might think.
Right, so, so I, I, yeah, I think it would be a good idea, we just so happen to have our, our map of the zoning, the zoning map. So I think, you know, it's important to even note, right, if maybe our deputy mayor could go through, yeah, bring it down, because, bring it down, so that it's on the camera, there you go.
So this orange section here is really the Marbledale corridor, so you can see that orange is all general commercial, so there's not residential housing that can go there unless, you know, the, the zoning is changed, and that has a whole process where you have to be publicly heard, et cetera, et cetera. So right now, nobody can really come in there and change that. Right?
So maybe to show some of the residential.
So, I'm looking at the code here of the...
Right.
So, yellow, um...
The blue.
Yellow or the, uh, no, it's not...
Oh, it's not the blue one?
So it's yellow or pink, or, pink is, is single-family.
No.
Right, single-family homes, is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
Right, so yellow or pink is everywhere where there's single-family homes, the green are one or two family dwellings, the blue, light blue is an apartment, so you can see here, this is where the consulate is, this is where 100 Columbus, 50 Columbus, the business district is in this dark blue, so you'll see, you know, s, different swaths along Main Street and Columbus, uh, general commercial, which is the Marbledale corridor, and then industrial, which we, you know, the majority of Marbledale used to be, it was rezoned over a decade ago, and now we have very small sections, like right here, there's a small section on Columbus, and a very, you know, this odd corner up on Midland, place where there's really nothing. That's all that remains of industrial zones in our village.
And so to address the Marbledale section, where a number of people have come forward and said they're going to build on Marbledale, if you look at the map, that's, that's zoned for commercial use, so we, they, we couldn't build there anyway if anyone even wanted to. And so it's important to understand that there are zoning laws that would prohibit certain areas to be developed anyhow.
So if you'd like one of these for your living room, what else would you hear?
For a nominal fee. That's not so nominal. Anyone else?
My name is Nancy Hyndord Day, I live in the consulate. I just wanted to let everybody know, we're not talking, we're talking about affordable housing. Affordable housing means, you know, for people, so they can afford it, and that's based on the area mean income. The area mean income for Tocco from 16, for 2016 to 2020 was $94,353. Ninety, you know, so, that's how, that's what it's based on. It's not based on... It's not based on $30,000, it's based on that. So everything springs from that. So you could actually have someone who's making $100,000 actually apply for affordable housing. Because if you look on the ads, they'll tell you, when you look in other communities, what the salaries have to be. So this is not low-income housing. I think some people think that affordable housing is low-income housing. It's not, it's affordable housing. It's housing for people who work but can't afford it. Because salaries, which this board has nothing to do with, what we really need to be talking about is how to raise people's salaries so they can afford to live in Tuckahoe. I sell real estate, houses in Tuckahoe are very expensive. They are not cheap. They range, $600,000 is a deal in Tuckahoe.
Thank you.
Bill Carney, 101 Middleton Place. Thank you for the, the presentation, I think it was very informative, because when I heard, I didn't really understand what was happening, I just heard there was going to be some changing to zoning for construction, and my concern was, and, you know, with all due respect to Lovely over here, was Marble Dale is going to be all of a sudden apartment buildings, because I knew they built the hotel over there. So my concern, really with three kids in Tuckahoe Schools, was, and we're overtaxed to begin with over there, you know, we just had to put construction up, that we would have more kids in the school, and we'd be, you know, looking for more places to put kids. So this clears a lot of that up, which is great. My one question, and I guess when you're talking about, you know, development of like 10 units and only one unit, it's not, it maybe doesn't make sense, but when you're talking, you know, units, maybe 30 units, and then you've got to make three affordable housing, was there any thought to making, I don't know, one of the three potentially, senior housing? Because I know there's a big need for affordable senior housing in Tuckahoe. I feel like a lot of the older residents get priced out but still want to stay in this community, and I know there's a huge waiting list for senior affordable housing. So was there any thought to, you know, if you hit a certain per, a certain number of affordable housing units, that you have to make one of those for some seniors? Because I know, like I said, they're getting priced out of the neighborhood, and they've been here a long time, so.
Actually, I'll let, Gary?
No, I don't think there was any, you know, we were just concentrating on the affordable housing right here, and not trying to go too far with the, you know, I think that might be another discussion for another possible law or something else, but on this one, we stuck with the affordable housing.
I just thought maybe it's something, because you do have a lot of people who are here for a long time, and to this woman's point, they're getting priced out, and if you can get, you know, them affordable housing in the community that they've been for a long time, might make sense, so, thank you.
Oh, no. I think for Union Place is the example of what he's talking about, is it true? Isn't that senior?
It is.
And highly diversified, affordable, so there is a model here.
Yes?
Anthony Fiori, Reuben Place.
Hi.
Good law, good law. Does this include condos too?
It includes any rentals or purchases, so yes.
How about conversions? Say quarry place with condo, condo.
If there's a new, if there's a new development...
It has to be new.
Right, so, so I think if it's converted, that would be considered new, no, Gary? Because if it's now a rental...
Another day.
You said it was an easy one, Anthony, isn't it, for this out there?
Maybe one will come before me one day, you know, I don't know these things.
Yeah, you never know, right?
It would be a decision by the building department at the time.
Thanks, Tony. Yep, that is a good question. Okay, so anyone else have any other questions or would like to weigh in?
Michelle Nitty, 109 Middleton. I just want to throw my support for this law, I think it's something, I don't think it'll have much impact, if any, I think Tuckahoe could probably do a little bit more, I think we're strong enough to do it, I think we need more kids and more resources in the schools, because that will only mean more resources for the kids, my kids, that are currently there, more activities, more sports, more AP classes, you know, more looks from colleges, so I think growth in the schools, to this woman's point, is not a burden, it's an opportunity for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so, if there's, unless there's anyone else, if there's anyone on the board that would like to make a final comment before we go ahead and move forward with the agenda? Is there somebody else who wants to speak? Oh, no, they're just having a chit chat. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
So moved.
Second.
And I'm going to ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so may I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the June 13th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And this is the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items only. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any agenda items outside of the affordable housing public hearing, you may come forward now. Okay, so then we will move on to resolutions, and the first one being authorizing the proposed local law regarding affordable housing within the village of Tuckahoe. The public hearing has been closed, and the board will now vote. So may I have a motion to authorize the proposed law?
So moved.
Second.
And I will ask Camille to do a roll call.
Yeah, yes. In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. So congratulations, Tuckahoe, on the small effort to improve affordable housing here. The second resolution, authorizing the use of Main Street Park for tennis or basketball courts by Ecap to do clinic on July 6th, 11th, 13th, 18th, 20th, 25th, 27th, and the dates named in August from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And resolution number three, I'm going to ask you, David, to just give a little update on the Community Choice Aggregation Program?
So if you recall, the aggregation program did end a few months ago, Sustainable Westchester did go out to try to procure new contracts for gas and electric, they came in way too high, they actually rebid it with a higher price, they came in way too high. So now they are actually going to go out in a different model and go for what they call the lowest responsible bid. So instead of actually putting a price into the contract, they're going to go for the lowest responsible bid, see what they come back with, and then it actually will come back to the municipalities to decide if they believe that is a lowest responsible bid. If so, it'll happen just like the last time it happened, everyone will get letters to say if they want to opt out of the program, if not, they will be in the program. But again, like I said, they can opt out of the program at any point, so this is just the initial step to yet, go out to bid yet again.
All right, so may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an updated MOU for an extension?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And resolution number four, some of you may remember that in, may I just ask if you guys are going to have a conversation, to please step out of the meeting room? If you're going to have a conversation, please step out of the meeting room, thank you. So the resolution number four, if you, some of you recall that in 2019, this was before the, this, this resolution came before the board to authorize a resolution subject to referendum, moving the village elections from March to November. At that time, we had four months of public hearing and input from the community as well as the board's discussion. The resolution was voted down at the time, and this board saw fit to bring the resolution back before the community and to vote on this resolution. The reason we are not having a public hearing is because this board does not vote to move the elections, it simply votes to allow the residents to decide that. And so I strongly believe that the right of the community to make this choice was taken away from you, and I for one would like to give it back to you. So I'd like to ask for a motion to authorize a resolution subject to referendum, that all general village elections of the village of Tuckahoe shall be held annually on the Tuesdays next succeeding the first Monday in November, to coincide with the date of the general election, and the term of office for each elected officer who currently holds the elected office terminate on noon of the first Monday in December, in the year in which such term would otherwise expired. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, Camille?
In favor? In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor, and the resolution passes. Congratulations, Tuckahoe. Resolution number five, may I have a motion authorizing the setting of a public hearing for September 12th to afford all interested parties an opportunity to be heard concerning the renewal of the franchise renewal agreement with Cablevision?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the sixth resolution is dear to many here, asking for a motion to set a public hearing for August 8th, 2022, to consider a recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission to designate the wardhouse located at 230 White Plains Road as a local landmark. May I have a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So those of you who have any interest in the wardhouse, we ask that you come out on August 8th at 7:00 PM to weigh in on the designation of the wardhouse as a local landmark. Resolution number seven, authorizing the street closure of Oak Avenue and Cottage Place for the annual block party on Saturday, August 27th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so it passes. May I have a motion to pay the bills, authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that will take us to departmental reports. Do you have anything, Camille? Chief?
Good evening again. Just very quickly, I just want to, following up the fireworks show that we had on Saturday night, just taking an opportunity to thank our law enforcement partners that really helped us, and quite frankly, we couldn't have the event without, without them. So of course, the Eastchester and Bronxville Police Departments, the Westchester County Department of Public Safety, as well as their emergency force, which are the volunteers that you see there, helping patrol and help with traffic and crowd control, the Eastchester Police Auxiliary who come out in numbers and help us with the traffic and crowd control as well, and of course, the Eastchester Fire Department and EVAC, which had many of their personnel there just in case, and luckily, none of them were needed, so.
Luckily.
We thanked them because we couldn't do it without them.
They had a lot of hot dogs, though.
And I just want to announce that on Tuesday, August 2nd, we are participating in the National Night Out. National Night Out was created several years ago, when people in urban areas were trying to take back the streets from drug dealers, and it kind of expanded, and for us, we use it as an opportunity to showcase our personnel and equipment. We are partnering this year with the Eastchester Police, as well as the Bronxville Police Departments, and so we're looking forward to having a huge event and a nice turnout. Want to thank Trustee Cronin for her help and support, her and Detective Ashley Tocido have been working, organizing this, and we're looking forward to Tuesday, August 2nd.
Cool.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
David, do you have anything?
I don't have anything specific, I just know that, I just wanted to congratulate the both officers, and we, you know, kind of slipped by, but there was a sanitation labor that was appointed tonight, so kind of give him a congratulations as well, and hopefully, we'll have him in the next couple of months with Mr. DeMarco, who couldn't make it tonight, and kind of introduce him to everybody, so, just think it was important to say congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Gary? Okay, and Elaine, are you going to present, or Swadish? Swadish is here, yay. She's here, person. She tricked you.
I came a little later, yes. Good evening, everyone, thank you.
Good evening.
I just want to say thank you so much. It was a wonderful, wonderful event on Saturday for the Tuckahoe's birthday, congratulations. I just want to let you know, there's a lot going on, summer is a very busy time at the library, and we all, it's already started doing in-person programs, some of them are outside we are doing and some inside, and for adults, summer reading, we have special cooking programs. First, Miriam, our adult reference librarian, she's going to do sushi demonstration, which is on Tuesday, June, July 19 at 2:00 PM, and Indian cuisine, which I am going to do on August 1st, and we are very lucky, our mayor, Omira Dino, is going to do a cooking class with her mom on Friday, August 12, and we have a concert, Electric Wilding Concert, Wednesday, July 27 at 7:00 PM, and we, lot of other programs ongoing, Monday night, Zumba, Tai Chi, every Wednesday noon, meditation, gentle cheer yoga every Thursday, and we have for teens, also online Minecraft program, which is civil engineering, part one is Tuesday, July 12, and Wednesday, July 13 at 4:30 PM, and we are doing the book club, 20,000 League Under the Sea book club, so if you sign, teens can sign up and get the free book from the library.
Swadish, can you just bring the mic down a bit? I keep hearing people telling me that they can't hear you. Thank you.
For in-person cook like a TV chef workshop, which is going to be on Monday, July 25th, from 3:30 to 6:00 PM, ages 10 plus, and babysitting workshop, if the children who are grade six and up, they can do it Thursday, July 28th, 10:30 to 1:30 PM, and they will get a certificate at the end of the program. And for children, we, every Tuesday, we have a storytime in the park, and art classes every Wednesday, on July 20th, 27 at 4:30 PM, and Euclid basics for kids, which is the third class, it's Tuesday, July 19 at 4:00 PM, and lot of other programs for children. Please check our website and sign up for the program.
Thank you, Swadish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've gone through all departmental reports, right? Right, Camille? Didn't miss anybody. So miscellaneous business, next village board meeting will be on August 8th, 2022. The movie nights have continued, first one was a big success, I'm sure Trustee Cronin will talk a little bit about that, but the next movie night will be on July 29th at the Main Street Park, followed by movie night on August 19th. So come out, bring the kids, bring them even in their sleeping bags, they fall asleep, it's fine. And so we'll go on to member reports, Trustee Engelbert?
Okay, thank you. Now, Mayor Dino did tell me I needed to keep it a little bit shorter, so I'm going to do my, my, my best, but I don't make any promises. So the first bit...
Start the timer, start the timer.
The first bit is, she's in the audience, and I'm going to embarrass her shamelessly, but Elaine Provenzano, your reading of my grandma's the mayor at our July 9th celebration was something I will remember for a very long time. You're an absolute treasure in a village that has many treasures, but you are very special to our community. Thank you so much for making that reading. Now, I'd also like to, we got a bit from the, the Tuckahoe History Committee, it was a real joy to come on down this, this past week and spend some time kind of with them, they're doing a lot of amazing work. There was a Memorial Day Facebook post about World War II, about the World War II monument in Depot Square. in Depot Square. If you haven't seen it, go on and check it out, and that's prompted some inquiries about missing veterans from that. So the committee conferred with Vito Pinto, who everyone knows and loves, who's the chairman of the VCPC, who's confirmed the list. But if there are kind of folks who have been, for whatever reason, kind of missed out on this, there's some criteria, including they need to have their discharge papers noting their World War II service, they must have been a resident of Tuckahoe when they entered the service, and if we want to have those veterans added, we encourage you to contact Vito Pinto. His phone number is 914-906-7431, or vpinto120@outlook.com, and they're setting the deadline of December 30th for that effort. A great shout out from the History Committee, they had a post for Juneteenth in June, and the photo came from Alice and Phil White. Once the photo was posted, Irene Ferran Garry's Norman was able to provide context, and the post was shared five times, and get this, a reach of over 1,200 folks. So really, that Facebook page is pretty rock star. And if you have any other photos you'd want to share with the History Committee, certainly you could find them at tuckahowarchive@gmail.com. And this amazingly active and vibrant committee meets every Wednesday from 9:30 to 12, right here in Village Hall, and you can get more information on the Village website. Last bit, I don't think I'm yet quite over, am I going to get the hook at this point, is our community center. They are going to have a sports and fun activity event sponsored by Ecap and our own Tuckahoe Police Department on Saturday, July 30th, from 11 to 2, play all kinds of fun violent things like dodgeball, kickball, basketball, and, you know, more tame board games as well. So, how'd it do, Mayor? Better?
Very nice, three minutes. Deputy Mayor Howell, let's see if you can top her.
I don't know if I'll top her, but I'll try. So again, I wanted to reiterate, congratulations to Lauren Peretta, Henry Suarez, and Laura Guaracho for always stepping up, you know, for the boards. It really means a lot, so thank you for that. This month's zoning board will be held July 13th at 7:30. There will be two items to be discussed. One is a variance at 86 Maple for a new deck, and then a return of the special permit at 31 to 33 Main Street, and that's for the creation of a new dance studio. The next planning board meeting will be held June 19th at 7:30 PM. All items on the agenda are returned. I wanted to reiterate that there's a site plan for 30 Elm Street to add a party room, that's the Pyramid Squash Courts. So if anybody's interested in weighing in on that, you can attend the next planning board meeting. The zoning board meeting will be held here in person and on Zoom, the planning board meeting will be held on Zoom only. And I know the zoning and planning boards do not meet in August, we give them a little break. I don't think the sign and awning meet in August? They will, okay, so no time off for sign and awning, so sorry, Laura. We already talked about the August 8th hearing for the Ward House, but I just wanted to remind everybody again, there's a nonprofit organization called Friends of the Ward House, www.wardhousefriends.org is where you can find out more information about that. I would like to send my condolences to my neighbors on Dante, the Otobo family, for the passing of Mr. Otobo. Mr. Otobo was a former UN ambassador, an author, a frequent guest speaker on matters of government, a very, very intellectual, you know, kind man, and he'll be missed by his neighbors. Moving on to primary elections, we got one done in June. I just wanted to remind everybody, we're going to have another on August 23rd, and that will be for the primary for Congress and the New York State Senate. I think people have seen, I pushed out this weekend, a whole bunch of advertisements for the Tuckahoe Challenge, so as we usually do around this time of year, start a walking and running program. So the walking program is going to take place Wednesday evenings at 7:00 PM, we'll meet at the library, we'll start at around a half a mile to a mile, and then ramp it up over the months of July and August to four miles. And on Thursday mornings, if anyone is willing to get up at 6:30 AM and meet me at the Crestwood Train Station, I'll be doing a running group. Pace will be slow, 10:30 to 11-minute miles, so no worries, and I can go slower, no problem. But the same kind of deal, we would start, you know, at a half a mile, a mile, and then ramp up to four miles, and then everybody can do the challenge, whether you walk or run. So I hope to see some folks there, and just wanted to say, I'm not going to have office hours, so if you, you know, if you want to have, talk to me, you have to move, so I'm just, you can always call me, but I'm not going to do office hours in addition to that over the summer. And everybody have a great summer.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor?
The Eastchester Community Action Partnership, the Ecap has a summer camp, and they are doing really well. They actually have 27 kids enrolled in their summer camp, so they are doing a fine job over there. They also was part of a summer youth program for the youth, you know, to get jobs in the village, and they presently have five of the young, you know, boys and girls that have gotten jobs so far for the summer. Trustee Engelbert already mentioned the collaboration with the Police Department in Ecap for the youth sports on July 30th. And then Ecap's food pantry is the first Wednesday of every month. Veterans, the Flag Day Ceremony with VFW Post 2285 and American Legion Post 979 was held on June 14th, where hundreds of flags were retired. There was also a barbecue for the community sponsored by our very own Tuckahoe Police Department, and I can testify, the food was actually very, very good. The after-action meeting, recapping this past Memorial Day Ceremony, and the planning for the 2023 Memorial Day Ceremony will be held at the Eastchester Italian-American Club on July 19th at 7:00 PM. The AC Jeffries, VFW Post 2768 here in Tuckahoe is still actively seeking new members. Anyone interested in joining should contact Quartermaster Edward Stowe at 914-260-3890. And veterans would like to thank the community for all their participation and support. The Tuckahoe Housing Authority, on July 20th, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, they have your tablet is waiting, it's coming to Four Union Place. To be eligible for a tablet, you need to have one of the following. Either have Medicaid, food stamps, Section 8 through HUD, SSI, be part of the WIC program, or Veterans Pension. You only need to be, have one of these. You must have a valid ID and proof of the benefit that you have, and there is a one-time $10 cold payment for the tablet. On August 20th, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority and the Tennis Association will have their annual Family Day. They will have food, there will be food, fun, and fellowship. Please come out and enjoy the Family Day Celebration on Washington Street, and also at Four Union, and their rain date is the next day on the 21st. And lastly, I want to congratulate all the appointments, Michelle Liscio, Lauren Peretta, Henry Suarez, Laura Guaraskio, and once again, the Lali and Lavoy family. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Trustee Cronin?
Thank you. Hello, everybody, I hope everybody's doing well. I want to start by wishing my son Zan a very happy birthday. It is not always easy, he's 10 today, and it is not always easy to share your mother with an entire village and have your birthday celebration get cut short so she can go to a village board meeting, so happy birthday.
Should we sing happy birthday to him?
Yeah, there we go, all month long, that's how we roll. Okay, moving on, so we, the, in, as part of the Village's 120th Anniversary Celebration, which this past Saturday was a part of, this coming Saturday, we are doing a, the History Committee and the, along with the Eastchester History Committee, is offering a trolley tour, a historic trolley tour with live reenactments. So you'll get to, if you participate, you get to learn all about some of our historic sites here in Tuckahoe with live reenactments and talk to George Washington himself. So if you are interested in participating in that, we are asking that you offer maybe a $10 donation. There is information about that on the Village website, and also on my Facebook page, there is a registration link, you can follow the link. So seats are very limited, and registration is definitely required, and that is this Saturday at 10 o'clock, and it runs about an hour, hour and a half. Yeah, hot ticket in Tuckahoe, and registration is happening very quickly, so if you are interested, I would sign up soon. For the Tuckahoe seniors, the senior citizen, the seniors have moved virtual for this tomorrow and maybe for the rest of the week, depending, due to COVID, and they will be closed completely in August. So if you are a member of the seniors, just remember that in August, they are closed for their break. TESC is, the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee is on summer hiatus too. I want, do want to mention that the Village lost a few longtime residents this month, and I just want to acknowledge them by saying their names. Mr. Otobo, who Renee mentioned, but also Gloria LaRusso, and Irene Donucci, and so the Tuckahoe seniors definitely miss them and are thinking about them. I want to thank Adrian, Michelle, and the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee for an outstanding Juneteenth celebration. It was, it was out, it was fantastic. So this was just a wonderful celebration, but it was also, and more importantly, an educational, an educational event, and a lot of people came and they learned about what Juneteenth is and what it means, and what it means to our whole community, not just one group of people. And so thank you, Adrian, for your tireless work on that and the entire committee. With that being said, you know, we rely, for all these events that we do, we rely very heavily on our local businesses, and I just really want to say thank you to the local businesses who not only came and stepped up for Juneteenth, but also for our fireworks celebration, our 120th Anniversary Celebration. So just want to give a shout out to Volagio's Crestwood Pizza, Volagio and Crestwood Pizza, Angelina's, San Fratelli Deli, Nutmeg, Teresa's Sweet Treats, and Stop &amp; Shop, am I missing? And Villarinas for their donations, and Rio Bravo, thank you. Villarinas and Rio Bravo for all the donations and all that they contribute to these events. Sorry, and the consignment shop at Depot Square, thank you. I don't want to miss anybody. I also really want to thank our volunteers, because without you, we would, we would be lost. On July 9th, we had our 120th Anniversary Celebration, we did a storytime with Miss Elaine, which was fantastic, but after that, we also did a craft, craft hour, and we had Tamaya Williams, Emma Serdón Verges, Michaela Moore Smith, and Selene Cronin come and volunteer, and so thank you to them. We had movies in the park two weeks ago, huge thank again, we cannot do it without the volunteers and all the donations that we get, so thank you so much again to Michaela Smith, Moore Smith, Justin Smith, Nick Engelbert, Marilyn Graham, John Gunther, Stephanie Palmer, and as always, TPD and the DPW, we would be nowhere without you. The next movie on the 26th is, is it the 29th? The 29th is Happy Feet, so we're going old school with Happy Feet, and then on August 19th, we will be doing Sonic the Hedgehog 2. So please do come out, and yes, please bring the kids in their pajamas, it's a fun night, we do hot dogs, we have popcorn, it's a great time. I want to say thank you and congratulations to the officers, and Lali and Mahon, and-
Lavoy?
Lavoy, Lali and Lavoy, and thank, and congratulations also to Christopher Maloney. Oh, okay, yes, and Lundie's Deli, I will not forget you. Thank you, and I said Crestwood Pizza. All right, Crestwood Pizza, who managed to turn a pizza and, out of a, made a pizza into a 120, so that was impressive.
That was pretty cool. Thank you, Trustee Cronin. So I just want to start out by saying thank you to the Cronin family for allowing your mom to be here, Zan, so when you get to watch this, I want to wish you a happy birthday. Everybody wishes you a happy birthday. So can, on the count of three, can everybody say happy birthday, Zan? One, two, three. Happy birthdays, Zan! He deserves at least that much to give his mom up on his 10th birthday. I also want to give congratulations to our very own Deputy Mayor Renee Howell for her promotion to VP of Clinical Sciences at Siemens. So congratulations to our very own Deputy Mayor. She didn't expect that, but you can't ask for permission, you have to ask for forgiveness later for those kinds of things. And I also want to reiterate, Trustee Cronin's thank yous and gratitude to the Juneteenth Committee. The events on Juneteenth were really remarkable, you did an awesome job, and I see every year we, it's getting better and better and better, and what I like about it is that it's educational, it's fun, and you have, you bring out everyone, it's just really an event that unites people. And so thank you very much to Adrian and to the entire Juneteenth Committee for the work that you put in. I know sometimes it's very stressful because we've had conversations, so thank you. I feel your pain. And I want to say, you know, a sad goodbye to the Tap House, who's been here for a long time, and welcome to Zero Otto Nove. We had their ribbon cutting on June 27th, and it's been packed ever since, you cannot get in. I, you know, I just go in and say, I'm the mayor, can you find me a seat? That's how I kind of get in. But no, seriously, give it, give them a try when you have a moment. You know, it's always sad when a longstanding restaurant or any business leaves us, and so I know it's been felt by many, and I think that the new restaurant is filling that void a little bit for some, so welcome. It's next on my list. And also, just want to let everybody know, for those of you who don't, that the quarry is closed after 18 years. I know there's some, a lot of rumors about what's coming there, I don't know for sure yet, and so I'm sure that we will support the next business that comes there. But it is always a difficult transition time, because people expect certain things that they were getting in the previous business. The 4th of July fireworks was phenomenal, I think we probably had, I don't know, I think there were around 2,000 people, according to, according to John, Johnny, I don't know how he knows that, but he just knows these things. He's counting with the clipper when they come in. And we also, we, so we celebrated the 4th of July with the fireworks, but we were also celebrating 120 years here in Tuckahoe, and it's really an amazing, it was an amazing time for everybody. And just because of that, Sal, we decided we were going to come back in August and make sure we open the public hearing for the Ward House, it was all for you, just so you know, you owe us. But no, really, it was a really great event, and I can't say enough about DPW and the police. It was a seamless event, those events don't go so seamlessly without the efforts of our Police Department and our DPW, who worked tirelessly and were very vigilant. So thank you, Chief, thank you to Zerolnik, our Lieutenant Zerolnik, who was there leading the troop. And I also want to thank, obviously, John Galuzzi, who put this thing together with all of the volunteers that helped, but he just does such a great job, and if anybody watched those fireworks, were they not just, Macy's has nothing on us, I'm just saying, just saying. Yeah. And also my condolences to the family of Mr. Otobo. I know everyone has already heard about that, but I want to just make a note that, you know, our Police Department had to work on this case that, you know, just was out there on Facebook, and people had all sorts of theories, and, you know, when, when, when he was missing, the Police Department worked closely with, you know, other law enforcement agencies, and just did a really phenomenal job, and I even, when I spoke to a few of, like the Chief and some of the rest of the leadership, they just really highlighted how cohesive the teams worked, and how quickly information was gathered in this type of case. So thank you, Chief, and the Department, and also thank you for the discretion used, you know, to give the family the privacy that they deserve, and I just ask that the Village keep the family, continue to keep them in your thoughts, and if you pray, in your prayers. And that is it for me, there is, this is the second opportunity to address the Village on any agenda items or- or not, and here he comes.
Hi, everybody. Jeff Suckerman, one more time, sorry. If, if anyone up here or over here has, has the ability to get the planning board to meet in person, I would love that. It's not the same. It's two and a half years, haven't seen them. Somehow we see the zoning board, we see you even once a year, if they announce, okay, October will be our time to see everybody. It's not the same on Zoom. I want to address them in a meeting like this and look them all in the eye and speak to them. And you can't do that on Zoom. So if you have any power over that, I mean, it's been a long time, two and a half years, never to get together.
Yeah, there, there are some health-related issues there, and that's part of the reason. So just, you know, that's a reason.
Anymore, because tonight you crammed 60 or 70 people in here. I've been to, I was on the planning board for six years. We never had 60 or 70 people in this room. I didn't say it's not, but it-
Yeah.
Planning board, once a year, once a year.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else?
Adrianne Michelle, 35 Washington Street. I'd like to first thank Jeff as a planning board member for your suggestion. First, I'd like to congratulate Police Officer La Bo, La Boy, and Police Officer Lali-
Lali.
-on their new appointment to the Tuckahoe PD. I look forward to seeing them around town and collaborating with them on different events in the community. I also like to thank the board, all my, I'm only up here to thank, thank people, so I just forewarn you. I'd like to thank the board for passing the resolution to allow residents to vote on the election move. With today's climate, having a choice not only matters, but it's a right. So thank you. Thank you to the village for hosting the 120th year celebration of Tuckahoe. Trustee Cronin, they didn't mention your yoga class. It was amazing, okay? And you did a wonderful job.
It was.
Right? And I also like to say, I held on to my peace until I woke up for work this morning. Thank you for that, and hopefully we get to do it again. Thank you to Chief Costanzo for your work on helping to track the data on the traffic on Washington Street that had been a concern from some residents in the neighborhood. Our children are going back and forth from the park to the store to friends' houses, and sometimes people that don't live in the area, like deliveries, come through, going at speeds that are a little uncomfortable. So I've been working and talking with the Chief, and he's been very diligent about capturing that data to see if there in fact is a consistent problem, or if it's just something that we just see and just feel a little uncomfortable because our children are there. So I'm working with him, and I thank him for his time with that. Lastly, I'd like to take this time to thank the entire mayor, the board, mayor, deputy mayor, trustee, Daryl, Kara, Nicole, Tuckahoe PD, DPW, Tuckahoe Library, and the Tuckahoe Eastchester Bronxville Community for helping to support and to, to volunteer at our second annual Juneteenth event. Your time and generous contributions and to our organization, we are so fortunate to have such a generous neighbors and volunteers, businesses and donors, and we can never thank you enough. Your support means the world to us, and in true cultural fashion, please let us know if there's anything we can do to support any of your efforts. We are your neighbors, and we are here to do whatever we can. And we extend our hands, minds, and hearts to you all. On behalf of the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee, we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I agree with you, she is a treasure.
Oh, yeah.
So I want to thank, I want to thank Mayor Andino and the board for having the, the August 8th meeting for the public hearing. I noticed for the first time that the Declaration of Independence is behind David and Gary, and I never noticed it there. In reality, 246 years ago today was Westchester's Declaration of Independence. On July 11th in 1776, the Declaration of Independence was read on the courthouse steps of the, of White Plains. And Samuel Crawford was there, Stephen Ward was there. Essentially, they both signed their death warrant that, that day. Stephen Ward wasn't killed, but Samuel Crawford was, because by doing what they did, they were marked by the British. Three months later from there, the Ward House was then taken over by British General Howe, not Howell, but Howe. And that was during the, the Battle of White Plains. So that was the British headquarters in October of 1776. At the wreath laying that we had in March, where we commemorated Samuel Crawford, that was when he was assassinated, when he was identified as Captain Samuel Crawford that was on the steps 246 years ago today. So am I passionate about the Ward House? Absolutely. I'm passionate about the history of this town, this village, the village of Tuckahoe, the town of Eastchester, the village of Bronxville. We have so many treasures with regard to historical artifacts with just the history. I thank you for doing, you know, your best in order to at least give it a hearing, and that's exactly what we want. So again, thank you, and happy birthday to your son, Kara.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Okay.
Just briefly, Elaine Provenzano, I'm here as a resident, 11 River Street, Tuckahoe. I want to thank you for, of course, the Ward House, everything that you're doing in the village, and all the different ways you spoke about tonight. But I especially also want to recognize what, the amount of work that goes into the fireworks, which I have been experiencing as, as long as I can remember, and that was brought back for the Centennial. Went away for a while, but it, what a, what a magnificent effort that goes into it. We are residents, and I'm sure Jeff would also agree, how the DPW, how it's, how it's organized, John, everybody, all of the events that were coordinated, and you cannot find one item the next day on the street, how, how well it's cleaned up. And it's just a beautiful comment about how this village comes together for these events like Juneteenth and like the, the 120th anniversary. So thank you for all that, that you are doing for the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board? You all ready to go have a beer? Okay. So, Tuckahoe, you, yes? No? Going once? Going twice? Sold. Have a good night, Tuckahoe, and happy 120th birthday.